Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for Monday, June 1st, 2015. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
President.
Councilmember Bruno.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Still here.
Councilmember Droscha.
Here.
Councilmember Ferris.
Here.
Councilmember Mulvaney.
Here.
Mayor Walz.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Will you please stand and join me and Councilmember Droscha for the pledge and invocation led by Councilmember Droscha?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, we ask that you watch over this governing body tonight as we make decisions for the city of Mason. Please guide and protect our nation's military wherever they may be stationed and also our nation's veterans. Amen.
Amen.
Are there any announcements this evening?
Just one, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ferris.
Just a reminder to any -- just a reminder to anyone who is driving on Saturday, there is a block party at the end of Jefferson with the food truck. And Saturday night, I believe, 5:30. Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce that on Thursday at 6 o'clock PM, the Mason Orchestral Society will be rendering a concert as part of the Thursday Night Live Concert Series. And so we encourage everyone to come out and bring a lawn chair, bring a blanket, and enjoy some music on the courthouse lawn as we continue this annual concert series that's sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. So Thursday at 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Other announcements? Item four, item five, people from the floors. Everybody in the audience that wished to address the council, please state your name and address, and we'll give you approximately three minutes.
Seth Waxman, 24 and 1/2, Seth Jefferson Street, apartment 3. I watched with great interest your special meeting, and I feel that my comments now are more appropriate at this time than prior to that meeting. I'd like to congratulate the city administrator on his new job, and as he leaves, I encourage this council to employ not only as they look for the future administrator professionals, but also to employ professionals to cognitively interview the city administrator as he leaves. Cognitive interviewing is as simple as describing how to do a lane change is the simplest example. And if someone doesn't know how to do a lane change, it can be an amazingly difficult thing. My recommendation to the council would be the firm Sensei Change Associates. They have a great cognitive interviewer there, and I think it would benefit this city greatly as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Can you state the name of that firm again?
Sure. Sensei Change Associates.
Sensei?
Yep, S-E-N-S-E-I.
Thank you again. Does anybody else wish to address the council from the floor? Item six on the agenda is the consent agenda, consisting of the approval of minutes from the council meeting of May 18th, 2015, and the approval of bills.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Droscha.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda is approved, 7-0. Regular business, item A is Resolution 2015-23, Authorization to Award a Contract to Reith Riley Construction Company for the construction of the Maple Grove Park Riverwalk Pedestrian Bridge and Trailhead Sign. Mr. Colburn, would you mind giving us an introduction?
Surely. At this time, I'd like to introduce David Haywood, our Zoning and Development Director. He'll give you an update of the status of that bid.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. David Haywood, Zoning and Development Director. Before you is a contract for the construction of the Maple Grove Park Riverwalk Pedestrian Bridge and Trailhead Sign. We went out to bid on this project to hire a contractor to install the bridge. We've talked about this project many times. It provides a link between Trailhead Parking on North Jefferson Street and the Hayhoe Riverwalk Trail on the west side of the creek. The project is necessary for the purpose of making this bridge a safe and secure pedestrian crossing. And what we have today, we received bids on May 12th. The low bid was Reith Riley Construction for $69,944.95, approximately $20,000 below the engineer's estimate, which is a really good number. Also, Reith Riley Construction Company is the same company that installed the very similar bridge on the north end of the cemetery. So this company has done this project before and are in good standing with the city. So without, I would take any questions or comments at this time.
Questions for Mr. Haywood?
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Haywood, for your presentation. My question, I guess, just for our information for the public, is there any reason why there is such a swing from the low bidder to the high bidder, or even just a swing from our original estimate, which I think was about $90,000, and the low bidder is quite significantly under that, and everyone else is quite significantly over that? Do you attribute that to anything in particular?
No, and in fact, I briefly discussed that with the city engineer, and he did not seem concerned about the low bid that was received. Obviously, we've worked with this company before, and it feels that it's a very good number. It recommends that we proceed with them.
And also, do you have an estimated time for completion of this project?
That I don't. We wanted to get through this hurdle before we were able to nail down a project deadline for them. But I think it's still reasonable to expect this to be completed this year.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Mulvaney?
Dave Park, approximately how many? Parking lots is 625 square yards.
How many parking spaces? No, I'm not sure that we measured that out, but I'm guessing probably somewhere around 10.
10?
Yeah. It would effectively repave the existing pavement that's there and then create paving where the gravel parking area is. So that's, if you can visualize that, that's the area in question.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Haywood? Mr. Haywood, I have one regarding the schedule, and I'm looking through my calendar unsuccessfully for the date of the Camino of St. James run, which plans to cross a bridge at that location. Has that been remembered or taken into consideration in the construction and planning schedule? And if not, can it just be researched and made note of?
It has.
Okay.
To my recollection, we worked with the applicant at the time for that race to provide for an alternate route if the schedules overlap.
Okay. And I believe part of the conversation also involved that due to the timing of it being a relatively short project, that it might be able to be moved one way or another shifted before or after that, if there was a possibility it was going to impact the race and cause them to shorten it and have the alternate route.
Yeah. Ideally, we want to try to keep the race intact, so I did speak with the engineer about this issue, and he did say that's most likely the contractor would be able to work with the schedule. But the good thing was that at the timing when the application for the race came in, they were also placed on notice that there could be a potential conflict. So I think we've kind of hopefully covered everything on either end.
Very good. Just wanted to bring that up again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we consider Resolution 2015-23 as having been read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to have Resolution 2015-23 as considered read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, the resolution considered read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Do you have one to introduce?
Yes, I do. City Council Resolution Number 2015-23, Authorization to Award a Contract to Reith Riley Construction Company for the construction of the Maple Grove Park Riverwalk Pedestrian Bridge and Trailhead Sign, introduced by Droscha, seconded by Mulvaney.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bruno.
A little tongue-in-chief, by looking at this, I maybe understand why some of our businesses downtown don't have their own trash cans, but I think the item number nine on this bid sheet should be eliminated to spend $2,357 for one trash can when the engineer's estimate was $500, I think is a little ridiculous. We always used to have a provision in our bidding whereby we could increase or decrease a contract by up to 10%. And if that provision's still there, I think that trash can, number nine, should be removed from this bid, and after the project is completed, we'll purchase a trash container on our own.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ferris?
If you look at that and the item immediately below, above, excuse me, if you look at number nine and the item immediately above it, I believe those two have been switched. Because that estimate is $500. So I believe the numbers have just been flipped.
No.
You mean the one below?
I mean the one below, excuse me.
Item 10.
The soil erosion, yes.
They both are equally out of proportion.
Yes.
Mr. Haywood, first question, first of all, a question for you. First of all, assuming that trash container refers to a construction debris dumpster?
It's a trash container, it's a parking lot.
That's just what I'm trying to confirm. That would...
It's one of those to them that he did.
Yeah, it's most likely a trash container for the, you know, not for construction debris, but for the...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bruno?
Going along with what Councilmember Ferris...
If you look at the others, the soil erosion and sedimentation are all in the same ballpark of 500 when Reith Riley bid for. The only thing that's really way out of line is that trash can.
Councilmember Bruno, I see 2,000 and 2,500 for soil erosion, and then 400.
That was the engineer's estimate.
Yep.
Okay, if you look at Reith Riley, it's $400.
Eastern is 2,000.
You look down at Highway Services is $500. Davis Construction is $500.
No, no. Highway Services is 1,700. Riley is 1,600.
I think you got a spreadsheet here.
At any rate, it's still 12% below overall the engineer's estimate, but it bears asking the question, is, or comparing the original material, the original proposal that came in, if the dollar amounts were transposed to the correct cell in the spreadsheet. And that's probably something that we would have to wait to report it back on. In looking at the top line, which are the three low bids selected by the city engineer, Councilmember Ferris' observation, for lack of anything else, would seem to make the most sense of an explanation across the board. It looks like the other two bidder, number two and three, their estimates are in line with the engineer's estimate, and if Reith Riley's, those two cell contents were flipped and exchanged, it would also be in line. Very close.
Just remember, if you look at three and four, they fall in line with the same thing with Reith Riley. The $500 and $500 for soil erosion.
Three and four?
Mm-hmm.
I can't honestly answer it. I would have to defer to the city engineer who evaluated and tallied the proposals. No, he can check into it, but it would go back to...
Mr. Mayor, I move that we table the award of this bid until we can get this question answered, please.
Motion's been made and seconded to table this pending clarification on, why don't we just go with the entire proposal?
As far as I'm concerned, just the trash container, and if you're concerned about the soil erosion measure, I think the trash container is the only one that's in line.
Okay.
May I?
We have a, we have a motion on the floor, but go ahead and comment, because it may be valuable.
I could try to contact the city engineer tonight while you're meeting. We could possibly get an answer while we're here tonight if you want to move this item to later in the agenda.
Okay. Well, first, we... Same evening?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem's suggestion is, comment is also valid. If we do go ahead and table this by a majority, we can readdress it under unfinished business. Any discussion? Did you have a comment, Councilmember Droscha? Any discussion on the motion table? All those in favor of tabling the motion, tabling the resolution pending a clarification, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Regular business, item B is Resolution 2015-24, to amend the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget and waive the formal bid process to award the well number eight repair project to Lane Christensen Company. Mr. Baker, would you like to give us an introduction on? I assume you will be coming next, so...
Ken Baker, Director of Public Works for the City of Mason. What you have before you tonight is a request to repair the, replace the motor for well number eight. Had failed in the comments of the resolution that I wrote, reference to the motor failure we had on the well. We got ahold of a contractor, which was Lane Christensen, and had to come out and give us, get us rent basically a temporary motor to put on the well, because we were doing our flushing program. I didn't want to be down a well while we were flushing. We were using lots of water. So we got a temporary motor, put on this well. We sent the motor in, had it checked out, found out that the motor was basically shorted out. We were trying to figure out why it was shorted out, what was the determining factor that would cause this motor to short out. Couple of things that we come up with determined is that load issues, and so we thought, well, if the motor's running at the full, near the top end of its load, then we maybe look at, this is the time to upsize the motor, go to a larger motor, the motor runs closer to the middle of its load range. Then we realized if we're going to change the motor, then we got to change the VFD to match the motor. So I said, well, then we got to get prices. So I got three price quotes to replace the motor, which is upsizing the motor from a 40 to a 50 horsepower motor, and then replacing the VFD so it matches the motor that we are replacing. So that's what you have before you tonight in your packet, is the three price quotes that I got to replace the motor, to upsize it from a 40 to a 50, and then get a matching VFD to go with that. So that's what I put before you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Questions for Mr. Baker? Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion to consider Resolution 2015-24 as being, considered as being read.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Droscha?
I move that we... Consider Resolution 2015-24 as read.
Councilmember Ferris? Motion made and seconded, consider Resolution 2015-24 as having been considered read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do you have one to introduce?
Yes, I do. City Council Resolution Number 2015-24, amend fiscal year, whoops, yes.
That's it.
Sorry. Amend fiscal year 2014-2015 budget and waive the formal bid process to award well number eight repair project to Lane Christensen Company, introduced by Droscha, seconded by Mulvaney.
Any discussion on the resolution?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bruno?
Should we have the dollar amount in there?
Any other discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 2015-24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes 7-0. Item C, Resolution 2015-25, Approval to Award the Drilling of Well Number 9A to Burkmire Well Drilling. Mr. Baker?
Funny enough, I'm already here.
That's efficiency.
Yes, sir. Well 9A, we went out to bid on this project, as I brought before you two council meetings ago, and the prices came in actually really, really well, better than I thought they would. But the two options are broken down, which is option one, which is the 12-inch well with a screen, and the option two, which is the 8-inch well. The low bidder for option A is Peerless Midwest, and the low bidder for the option B, which is the 8-inch well, is Burkmire Well Drilling. So at this point, I will open it up to questions, but the recommendation from the city engineer and from staff is with the original recommendation, which was with the 8-inch well.
For clarification, would you just cover again what the options consisted of?
Yes.
Drilling, drilling an additional well versus continuing to drill the existing well, and which is option A and which is B?
Yes, yes, I can do that. Option B, which is the one that we, I made recommendation to last time, which is drilling an 8-inch diameter well down to 400 feet, casing off the upper 300, and using that well along with the well that we already have out there on site right now, that's option B. Option A would be drilling a new well that's 12-inch diameter, putting a stainless steel screen in the well, and then abandoning the well that we have out there right now, basically only just having one well on site. That's the difference between option A and option B.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Baker on the options? Just, I have one, as a follow-up to, I believe it was about a month ago. The topic was brought up of continuing on with the plan of just one well, and clearly we can see that that's at a higher cost to abandon the first well, number nine, drill a new 12-inch screened well. What impact does that have? What do you expect through time with the water flow with the screen, a screened well versus a well that's been cased to get beyond the part of the strata that collapses?
Meaning operational-wise with maintenance-wise?
Water flow...
You know, we've had good luck with Franklin Farms well. That well has a screen in the bottom of it. We have no problem getting through a five-year cycle. We try to do a five-year cycle on our wells for cleaning and maintenance. We have no problem getting five years out of it before we have to do maintenance. You just have to be aware, if you have a screen in it, there's a little bit more energy being, taken care of to get to the screen and get it, to get it cleaned. You have to get a chemical in there, you have to surge it and try to get the, get out into the formation to get the media clean. That's the difference of a screened well compared to a rock well. Where a rock well, you can just work the formation and work your chemical in, where it's just a little more work to get a stainless steel screen or a screen clean. That's the difference. There's a little more work involved with a screen.
So maintenance costs would be higher?
I don't know, there would be, I mean, you're going to have a contractor come out, and he's going to bring a certain amount of chemical out, he's going to be on site. I don't see there's going to be a huge difference in maintenance costs.
Okay.
No.
Thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Baker? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Droscha?
We consider Resolution 2015-25 as having been read.
Councilmember Ferris?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to have Resolution 2015-25 considered as being read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Is there any discussion on the resolution? All those in favor, do you have one to introduce?
I do. City Council Resolution Number 2015-25, Award the Drilling of Well Number 9A to Burkmire Well Drilling, introduced by Droscha, seconded by Mulvaney.
Thank you. Any discussion on that resolution? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Resolution passes 6-1. Item D is Resolution 2015-26, Approving an Increase to the City of Mason Utility Rates. Mr. Colburn, could you give us an introduction?
Honorable Mayor and council members, we're proceeding forward in regard to a discussion we also had at the annual budget. Mr. Smith, our finance director, met, as did the public works director, with the City of Mason Utility Rates Committee and came out with a recommendation as forwarded to you at 1 and 1/2%. And that's consistent with the study that we've done last year as well. If you have any specific questions, I'd be more glad to answer them for you, as well as Mr. Smith had attended that meeting and is available for you.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I have a question for, for our finance director, actually, a few questions. First is that I recall that based on our study that we did last year, we significantly increased the rates for this, the current year that we're in, and then this is 1.5 increase percent, percent increase this year. What was the proposed increase for next year that would also get us to where we needed to be by 2017?
They were, they were even subsequently after the first initial increase, so the 1 and 1/2% was what Mr. Tracyak had recommended until we get another study.
Okay. And would that continue beyond 2017, or would that just be for this three-year cycle?
Typically, I mean, the way he put it out there was, was in about a five-year period, and we had the large increase, but he recommends a new study around every five years. So at that point in time, based on a lot of the same factors and capital that'd be coming up and other O and M operations and maintenance increases, there could be, there could be changes, but up until the next time we did a study, which that's what he would, that's what he recommended to us last year.
Okay. And just as a point of reference, our rating... And just as a point of reference, our rate increase from last year, I believe that was close to fifteen percent when you do both the water and the sewer?
Yeah, the, the average overall was 15.8 percent last year, and then he had recommended 1.5 throughout the remainder of, of this study.
Okay. Thank you.
No further questions.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
I want to ask the Finance Director, what approximately how much, maybe tell me the chart, how much is this 1.5 percent going to generate?
It would depend on the utilization, but based on the utilization and what we had billed for this year, would create about $40,000 of change in our revenue for water and sewer.
Okay. Did my, I guess a follow-up question. Did the water and sewer rate study committee take into consideration the award of the $485,000 and the $500,000 grant that we found that we're going to get from EPA?
They, I mean, that was part of Tom's, Mr. Tracyak's study as well, so I mean, it was, I guess I would say yes, just based on the figures used as part of the study.
Mayor Proton?
I move that we consider Resolution 2015-26 as having been read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to have Resolution 2015-26 considered as being read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Do you have one to introduce?
Yes, I do. City Council Resolution Number 2015-26, approving an increase to the City of Mason utility rates, introduced by Drosia, second by Mulvaney.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I read over the report for this meeting and the resolution that's before us tonight, I immediately thought back to our discussions last year on this topic of increasing utility rates, and at the time, I proposed that we would increase them more consistently as opposed to the, the one lump of 15.8 percent last year, and then the subsequent increases this year. Unfortunately, that particular proposal was not received favorably, and we went with the singular increase. However, when looking at this year's increase, I would personally rather see us maintain the 2015 rates one more year consistently, even though these are small adjustments. I, I think that last year's increase was so significant that we ought to at least keep them steady for one year and then look at the, the increase in 2017. I also realize that we're trying to get to a certain level to make significant improvements to our POTW plant and so forth, but the, the increase that we took last year does help us to reach that goal in 17 very significantly, and I think that if we address the utility rate increase possibly next year after holding steady for a year, that we can still meet the goals that were set forth in the utility rate study. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Drosia.
I happen to disagree with that opinion. I think this is an inflationary increase, and in fact, I'm not even sure it's covering inflation for this year, and I think it's absolutely necessary to do this, that we don't end up having to jump another 15 percent in the future, near future.
All those in favor of Resolution 2015-26 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Resolution passes five two. Item E is Resolution 2015-27, authorizing Mayor Walts and City Administrator Colburn to sign M.D.O.C. contract number 15-5241, which is job number 117414A as in Adam. Mr. Colburn?
Yes. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, this is what we've referenced as a safety grant through M.D.O.C., and it specifically addresses the box light signals being placed at two intersections along Kip Road and Jefferson, Kip Road and Cedar Street. It's also inclusive of some concrete work. In essence, there is required authorization for signatory authority, and so that is what we are requesting tonight to be able to proceed with the grant this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Drosia.
A move that we consider Resolution 2015-27 as having been read.
Motion's been made and seconded to have Resolution 2015-27 considered as having been read. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do you have one to introduce?
Yes, I do. City Council Resolution Number 2015-27, authorizing Mayor Walts and City Administrator Colburn to sign M.D.O.C. contract number 15-5241, job number 117414A, introduced by Drosia, second by Mulvaney.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 2015-27 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes seven zero. Item F is, is a motion for 1020 East Ash Street regarding a quote to continue the demolition and finalize the demolition services. Mr. Colburn?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, this is to proceed forward now with the demolition of the building. This goes also into the next year's budget in terms of timing. The asbestos removal was completed for the most part. There was one issue that popped up with that, and I have the Zoning and Development Director, David Haywood, to give you a little more details.
Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor and Councilmembers. Mr. Colburn's pretty much summed it up in a nutshell. The only remaining items left here to do on this property is to abate the remaining asbestos work with the flat tar roof and the chimney flashing, and then demolish the structure. Before you is a quote from Anderson Fisher to do just that. It will provide both the demolition and the, separate the, the remaining asbestos for that project, and that'll complete the demolition for that project. So if you have any questions or comments, I'll take those now.
Are there any questions for Mr. Haywood? Councilmember Mulvaney.
Mr. Haywood. We contracted to have the asbestos removed, removed sometime last fall, about October, and, but this asbestos that we're paying $4,130 to have removed now was not removed by them. Wasn't their bid inclusive to remove all asbestos last fall?
Their bid did not include the roof.
It did not include?
Correct. The bid include the roof or the chimney flashing, but they couldn't get to either because of the, I guess the condition of the structure. So they elected not to do the chimney flashing.
So they reduced their bid, seems like it was around $6,300. So did they reduce their bid from that last fall by $4,000?
I don't remember the exact amount, but they did not include the roof as part of that. They did give us a credit for the chimney flashing.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, what they told us at the time is that the roof could come down with the demolition, and now, and now-
So their bid was not to include this particular part of the asbestos removal?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Bruno?
They are an approved demolition contractor and licensed as such.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Is Anderson Fisher an approved and licensed demolition contractor?
They are, the, what, I believe what happened here was the asbestos abatement contractor said that the roof can come down as part of the demolition.
That's not my question.
I know, I'm trying to get to your answer. So what I'm, what I'm trying to, to explain to you is that what they are telling us is that this can come down as part of the demolition. What Anderson Fisher has told us is that, well, but you have to have a certain level of training to do that. What they're providing in their quote is that training, someone to cover that particular part of the law requirement.
So in essence, by providing asbestos removal mitigation, remediation, training, that, that offsets, replaces the requirement that we would have of being licensed? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I go back to my original question? Taking the asbestos out, is Anderson Fisher a licensed demolition contractor?
You do not need to be a licensed demolition contractor to remove asbestos. You have to have a certain level of training to do that. You don't have to be an asbestos contractor to remove this type of asbestos.
Do you not have to be licensed to be a demolition contractor?
I don't believe so.
So can I pick on you, Tom? Then Tom Smith and Company could take this building down.
I believe so.
Okay.
I'm not aware of a company being required to have a demolition license aside from an
Any other questions, Mr. Haywood?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Clark.
I would have liked to seen the other bids that were submitted, to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples here, to see that there's no restoration or anything is going to be done here. I don't know if the next bidder for less than $3,000 would have been, would have done restoration to clean it up. Basically, it sounds like there's going to be a hole in ground there, or do it, because there's nothing, no restoration or seeing is going to be done.
It's got install and compact sand in the area, but again, I, you know, that doesn't Mr. Haywood, is that a typical, is that a typical restoration or rehabilitation, then furnish and install and compact the sand in the excavated area? I mean, I know we haven't had that much, but there's, like, it's what we see across the street now, waiting for the next phase of what was Enco Graphics.
Yeah, I mean, it's fairly typical to, to provide that, but if we wanted to be clear, we can certainly go back and ask for them to tighten it up.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Clark.
My point is that that property sits right on the edge and is part of property that the city's currently trying to market and sell, and if we just tamped down the sand, it's going to settle and puddle and look like who knows what, then that's going to make it even that much more difficult to sell these properties that we currently can't even get anybody to look at. So I think that it's important, and I guess that I'd like to make a motion to table this until we have an opportunity to review the other bids to make sure that, to see if, if restoration and those kinds of things may have been included in those bids as well. And then if they're not, then we need to determine the course of action that we want to go from, from there.
Motion made and seconded to table this. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Council, Mayor Proton Brown.
I would just ask to, to the maker of the motion, would we table this till the next meeting, or just table it indefinitely? Okay, so can we have that as part of, part of the motion table till the next meeting?
It would be tabled until it's offered to be brought off the table. We can be, we can be specific, or it doesn't matter?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Mulvaney.
I'd like to speak to the question. I mean, if there's one reason why we can't get any market for that particular lot now is because there's one very bad-looking structure on it, and we've been a long time trying to get that off, and we don't have the budget to do it all at one time. We budgeted for the asbestos, we wait a half a year, and now we're budgeting to get it down, and I don't know why we want somebody to come in there and do more than compacted sand. I mean, so they, I guess could throw grass seed on it, but you got to take a look at what's there right now. The grass is about eighteen inches high, and we only require it to be mowed once or twice during the season, so it isn't like this is park property. It is, all we need is a surface so that the person that rents the farm ground there can get over it with his bush hog and keep the grass clipped down, and so I would prefer that we not table the bid.
Mr. Haywood, in the original request for proposal that was provided to this and the other bidders, was there a request to have ground cover replaced?
Generally, that is, is requested with a demolition project. I assumed that that would have been done with that, and I apologize for it not being included in there.
Would it be, would, is this something that you can address similar to the, the city engineer and, and make a phone call and find out if, if that was intended to be included, that it was also, that ground cover was also installed on the compacted sand in this price?
I could certainly try that.
It says right in there, no seeding or restoration of disturbed areas included.
That's pretty clear.
Uh, may I offer a suggestion?
Yeah, I would just say, so they didn't comply with that part of the RFP, but this is still the, the staff's recommendation that this one be accepted as is.
Can I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
If there's an amount that you would be comfortable with to offer the contractor, you know, not to exceed type thing? I don't know if that's a possibility.
Mr. Mayor, the motion to table was because we want to look at the other bids to see if in fact that's included in those bids, and those other bidders did comply, and if they did comply, then irregardless of what Anderson Fisher may want or take, if they complied and Anderson Fisher didn't, then they should be disqualified, and the next bidder that did qualify and answer and provide all the information and stipulations should be awarded a bid.
Understood. If that was possibly included in the next lowest bidder, then we're, we're looking to expend nearly 3,000 more just for ground cover of a former construction, demolition Is there any further discussion on the motion to table? All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Five two, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Motion to table passes five zero, five two. Takes us to unfinished business. Item A is the discussion that was requested on the legal opinion from the attorney on Chapter Eight, Article Two, Regulating Oil and Gas Wells. Mr. Hitch, would you please care to comment on your lengthy?
Well, one thing I won't do is read it all.
Well, one thing I won't do is read it all. But I will talk just briefly about this. I, um, trust that council's had an opportunity to take a look at it, and there is quite a bit there. As I was remarking with someone, my analysis section is not particularly long, uh, but I think it's, uh, in light of the fact that, um, in trying to look at this issue and trying to make a presentation, when the, uh, information was set out in a way where you could see how it's developed, um, I think it's more than clear, in my opinion, that the state has, uh, preempted the field as it relates to the, uh, regulating the specific operation, that is, the drilling, uh, at whatever depths below the surface of the ground. Uh, the concern that, um, the city had is, uh, as we understand from the, uh, well, and again, I'm going to make it clear as I did in my memo, um, I'm making the assumption that the physical, uh, well head would not be located within the city limits of the city. And given that it would be in Allerton or Vivae Township, and there would be directional drilling, the bottom hole, um, might be a mile away from where the well head is and at many thousands of feet below the surface, but still technically below the city of Mason. The stat... The case law that I cited in my memo makes it clear that particularly for cities, they are not excluded from, uh, all regulation of oil and gases, and this supervisor of wells as designated name by the legislature, um, does not purport nor does it regulations provide for all regulation preempting all cities. But what it does do is that it definitely carves out for the supervisor of wells, the, uh, drilling, deepening, re-drilling, reopening, casing, sealing, operating, plugging of wells, the recovery of, uh, disposal of saltwater, oil field wastes, the sort of things, uh, preventing the escape of oil or gra... Uh, gas out of one stratum to another, that it's basically getting into the technical aspects of the drilling of a well, not just the hours of operation, not just necessarily the noise. Uh, it does include, however, spacing, uh, and those sorts of issues and regulating the production from wells, however spaced. But it's that, as I... Without belaboring the point, it's that actual operation at 3,000 feet or 4,000 feet, or whether it's horizontal or whatever the method is of extracting the oil from the bottom hole, that's clearly, in my opinion, uh, within the exclusive jurisdiction of the supervisor of wells. And so, the city's regulations as currently in place, uh, would purport, frankly, to give the city the authority to, uh, require a permit in the first instance and deny, uh, a permit based upon some determination by the city of health, uh, safety, or, uh, general welfare concerns. My belief is that under the current state of reg... Of regulation as set out in the, uh, Natural Resources Environmental Protection Act, that that, uh, sorts of requiring a permit and, um, determining whether the methodology used by the driller, uh, meets requirements, uh, would be something that was solely within the purview of the supervisor of wells under the MDEQ. And so, it's my opinion, uh, that based upon, uh, statute and the case law, uh, the city would be preempted from attempting to regulate a, uh, horizontal drilling when the wellhead's outside the city and the drilling is some several thousand feet below the surface.
Are there any... With conventional as what was probably originally addressed by, uh, Chapter Thirty-eight, is that still substantially in effect then for wellheads that are...
Making that, uh, analysis here, but my general, uh... My general opinion, well, let's put it this way. My... My opinion, not having specifically looked at that, to the extent that hours of low... Uh, hours of operation, noise levels, these sorts of things that the city can, uh, regulate, that would remain. Uh, in terms of, uh... Because the wellhead's located in the city, it's my opinion that we have more authority to regulate.
That's... That answered my question. Thank you.
I can't tell you precisely where it begins and ends, but because the wellhead's located in the city, we... The city, I believe, has a much greater interest because of the potential, uh, as I use that phrase, nuisance-like attributes of an oil operation within the city limits, uh, that I think the courts are going to be much more sympathetic, if you would, to our, uh, concerns for the general citizenry. So, my answer would be yes, recognizing that the finer the point, the more difficult to ultimately determine.
Regarding a possible location of a wellhead within the city limits, city boundaries, do you feel that Chapter Thirty-eight is... Is still effective, or does it need an updating to be more effective, or is it as good as it gets?
That's a question that I did not specifically look at. That would probably take, uh, a little research, not a lot. I guess I'd like to see... There frankly is now, uh, because of, um, the change in technologies, particularly in communities up north, it might be worth, uh, uh, I wouldn't want to spend a lot of time on this because I don't know if... If it's necessarily pressing, but it's probably worth taking a look at. I did not make an opinion as to whether this should be updated for the latest technologies for wellheads in the city. So, that, uh, that I cannot answer.
If that doesn't take too much extra work to look into it, maybe that would be beneficial. Because by the time it was a pressing issue, then it'd be too late to take a look at it.
And that's a very good point. So, what I'll do is I'll have one of my associates, we'll try to round up a couple of the, uh, drilling, uh, maybe in Traverse City, they have some, uh, ordinances now. We can probably call the next city manager and might give us a break on the copying costs. Uh, anyway, uh, anyway, but we... I think that those are the sorts of areas where we would take a look at.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hitch. Are there any questions, further questions on this? Other unfinished business. Councilmember Bruno.
None.
Councilmember Clark.
None.
Councilmember Ferris.
None.
Councilmember... Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes. Uh, I would just like to know if we have an update on the bid in Resolution Twenty-Fifteen dash twenty-three?
David Haywood, zoning development director. Um, we did contact the city attorney. I did speak... Or the city engineer. I did speak with him. Um, he was not able to speak directly with the employee who prepared the spreadsheet, but he did feel that it was likely a transposition of the numbers. He was comfortable with proceeding as that.
Mr. Colber.
It's not uncommon that some of these bids that, especially this being such a low bid, that some of the contractors oftentimes round in where they do make some of their profit on a specific line item. I'm not saying that's what they did. I don't have a clue. What I am saying is that it is so significantly lower that I think that it's, uh, very valued in terms of versus the loss of time and knowing that overall that the bid is exceptional, that I would recommend we proceed.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Since I raised this item under unfinished business, I would move that we take from the table Resolution Twenty-Fifteen dash twenty-three.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to remove this Resolution Twenty-Fifteen dash twenty-three from the table. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes five-two. Is there any new additional discussion on Resolution Twenty-Fifteen dash twenty-three?
Yes.
Councilmember Grosho.
I would ask only that if the trash can is indeed going to cost what it says there, that it be struck, and we'll purchase our own. But if it's a transpositional thing, then let's leave it alone.
Is... Is that just a recommendation to staff to handle administratively, or...
That would be my thing, yeah. I mean... Does that sound reasonable?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bruno.
If that can be provided to us in writing, I would be willing to go along with it, but I would want to see something that says either that's a transposition of numbers or if that trash can price is correct, that it be removed and we will purchase our own. Now, whether we got to do that, change the resolution or whatever, uh, unless we get some assurance on that, I... I think to spend... I don't care if the bid is reasonable. I understand that. But again, to spend $2,300 of taxpayers' money for a trash can is ridiculous.
One second. In the, um... In the letter from the city engineer, it states that "The low bidder, Reith Riley Construction, is known to us and is currently working on projects with Wolverine and the city of Mason. Based upon our knowledge and working relationship with Reith Riley Construction", it goes on endorsing the company as, uh, as a known commodity. I would think this is something we could handle, task you to handle administratively and just update us as to how that was handled. If that's to the satisfaction of the remainder of council. Any other discussion? All those in favor of Resolution Twenty-Fifteen dash twenty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Resolution passes five-two. Unfinished business, Councilmember Mulvaney.
None.
Unfinished business, Councilmember Grosho.
None.
New business, Councilmember Bruno.
None.
Councilmember Clark.
None.
Councilmember Ferris.
None.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just a few brief matters under new business tonight. The first, uh, is that with Mr. Colber's transition underway, I would like to ask that a memorandum be compiled of current and ongoing projects, uh, that would require the attention of an interim city administrator and this council, um, as we continue to move forward. I... I think that there are a lot of things that are going on, and I just don't want to see anything fall through the cracks. And so, I understand that Mr. Colber will probably be relaying some of this information and some of his responsibilities to the rest of the administrative staff, but I would... I would personally like to see, uh, maybe just sort of like a detailed list so that we can then follow up, uh, in the intervening weeks and months with... With the rest of city hall staff to make sure that those items are being followed up on. The second is that earlier this year, uh, we had a goals and objectives meeting, and we followed up with that, and we've talked about some of those goals and objectives even during our budget meeting. And, uh, as I checked some of my notes, I don't think that we have received a readout or an official, um, official report from that second meeting and what we decided in terms of all of our various goals and objectives for the year. And so, just to... Also, in the interest of our city administrator transitioning out, I would ask either him or Mr. Haywood just to provide the latest round of notes from that second, uh, goals and objectives meeting so that we can have that and then follow up not only with staff, but as we get to the point of appointing a permanent city administrator, that then we would be able to revisit these documents with our... With our new administrator. The third and last item under new business that I would like to bring up is during our special meeting, we talked about not only appointing a city council review committee or an ad hoc committee, uh, but that we as a council would then provide some level of instruction or consensus as to how that committee, um, could operate in the intervening days and weeks. And so, I would simply put out a suggestion that we could tentatively hold a work session next Monday, um, at our usual time of 7:30 if council members are and staff are amenable to that so that we would not lose, uh, too much time, uh, by the next time the council would meet on the fifteenth. So, uh, I'm not making a formal request for that, but simply asking, uh, asking council to check your calendars, asking administration to check your calendars, see if that's reasonable, and then if it is, the mayor or the administrator could then notify us and... And call a work session, uh, with appropriate notification. With...
Mayor Pro Tem.
Sure.
Did you say the Monday preceding the council meeting at the regular time?
Uh, yes. My suggestion was Monday, June eighth at 7:30 PM for a work session to discuss the process of moving forward, uh, and... And the... The work of the ad hoc committee.
Mr. Mayor, I will be out of town that night. I'm not available.
How does everybody feel about, uh, Monday, the fifteenth, 6:30, one hour before the regular, please scheduled council meeting?
I can do that.
Okay. I'm amenable to that.
That would make sense as... As well. Uh, also, that still leaves a little bit of time to, uh, compare notes with Mr. Colber as necessary. And I would just like... Were you completely...
Yes, I'm...
I would like to also echo that and say that that would be a good time as well for the council as a whole to evaluate, um, you know, how they want to move forward with ... With the data that we have and what... What we want to use and not use is... And... And, possibly pass on to an interim administrator at that appropriate time. But if everybody is agreeable to that, we can begin this... This process and, um, notice for the special meeting and take it from there. And that's what I was going to bring up under new business if nobody else did, but it's set, so we'll do that. Councilmember Mulvaney.
None.
Councilmember Grosho.
None.
Correspondence. I... I don't... I have no correspondence this evening. Liaison reports. Historic district, Councilmember Mulvaney.
Historic District Command, uh, at the request of a petition by Mr. and Mrs. John and Mary Kelsey to, um, uh, ask for the historic commission to approve the demolition of the building known as 160 East Ash Street, where their intent would be to, uh, replace 160 East Ash Street with a 44-foot-wide, three-story, uh, building. And they indicated they had already acquired a 22-foot lot on the, um, east side of the, um, uh, current building. And, uh, questions were asked concerning, uh, common walls between, uh, 160 and the adjoining building to the west. And, uh, we were told the architects... Architects had said that, uh, and engineers had indicated that there was no common wall there. And so, it would be, uh, safe and feasible to tear down 160 and, um, and rebuild. And so, the historic, uh, district commission, uh, approved that that was acceptable within the, uh, criterion of the downtown historic district area. Um, do you have any questions? We'll... Dave and I will accept any questions you want to have.
Councilmember Grosho.
Kind of match the other buildings that are on that block with... Kind of match the other buildings that are on that block with, with, in regard to how it will look?
The architect went in at length in terms of potential selection of brick that matches other buildings within the block, and just generally described the building as being three floors with commercial business space on the first floor, three apartments on the second floor, one apartment on the top floor with four enclosed garages.
Thank you.
From the alley?
Accessible from the alley.
Okay. Any other questions for Councilmember Mulvaney? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted, trying to picture, which, which building is 160? Is that, is that Sullivan's?
Sullivan's, no, known as?
George Sullivan's building.
It's got, I think it's called the root building, the cornerstone, and?
I know, once you told me Sullivan.
Yeah. I recall from one of my times serving on Historic District Commission, the Secretary of Interior states that the building is not a contributing member of the Historic District. That was his opinion, but?
160 wasn't part of it?
It's not a contributing member as far as its, its history and, and appearance, but it is a portion of the HDC. So it's just a, so from the standpoint of preserving anything there, the opinion is there's nothing there to preserve, so it makes sense in that standpoint, but?
The only thing I would caution them on is that they'd better double-check and triple-check to make sure that any digging that they do next to that doesn't bring the building down next to it. I remember one very well, where, where the Farmers Bureau building is, where they brought one down, and that wasn't even adjoining, it was just close.
Bookman's Bakery.
Yeah. I, I mean, in response to that, we'd assume that building permits would be, have to be obtained in engineering drawings and probably have architectural stamps on the drawings, and somebody that would be responsible in the event that happened.
Anything else for Councilmember Mulvaney? Planning commission, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The planning commission will meet next Tuesday, June 9th, at 6:30 PM here in City Hall.
Traffic commission, Councilmember Grosho.
Traffic meets July 22nd, 5:30, right here.
Tree commission, Councilmember Ferris.
Nothing to report, but you still have a chance to do a sesquicentennial tree there. And the form is available online, it's $150, and there, it would be kind if you got it in before the end of August so that they can actually purchase the tree and get it planted for this fall. Thank you.
And the DDA meets in July. Are there any councilmember reports? Councilmember Ferris, anything new with the trail?
Nothing new to report.
The city, the farmer's market does start July 11th, the week after the 4th.
Question, you may or may not know the answer, but a large pedestrian bridge appeared over the Red Cedar River alongside Oakmuss Road yesterday. Is that part of a connecting trail? Mr. Haywood may know. It's, it's vivid green, like John Deere green in color. Can't miss it.
Is that very close to Sand Hill?
No.
Okay.
No, it's just?
It said on the news it was not.
Okay, not part of the tree, just a pedestrian connecting bridge. It's just, just west of Oakmuss Road, north of Mount Hope. So next time you go up that way, you can't miss it.
Yes.
Okay. Any other councilmember reports? Administrators report. Mr. Culver?
Yes, sir, thank you. Couple of different things, as we go back a few years, you may recall that we made great efforts to get a grant from the federal government in regard to us having to meet the new regulations on radium 226 and 228. And the city council in the city of Mason was very successful in garnering a half a million dollar grant. However, then they somewhat changed the rules on us of not being able to use it if something was already built. We went through great machinations with them over a period of several years, and then continuing to identify what would and could be used for. So that being said, they, we had identified that wastewater treatment plant could be considered a water project, and then we had to then reapply basically for what they called a STAG grant, a state and tribal grant. So we had done that, working with Wolverine, doing environmentals, and as you recall, the city council approved a contract this last year with Prehn and Newhoff as the engineering firm with, to proceed forward with the headworks. That being said, we were still working through the paperwork requirements with EPA, and I'm pleased to announce to you that we received an agreement with EPA for a total of $485,000, which sounds a little short, but if you recall, they said from the very beginning they take 3% off the top, so that's where the rest of it goes for the half million. So I'm pleased to say and congratulations are in order to the city of Mason that the half million dollar grant, we now actually have an agreement with the US EPA for that was funded, so congratulations. Also on road funding, the state legislature found $400 million. This is not new money, basically they're taking funds from another agency, much of it from MEDC. In essence, what I'm seeing here is we're solving one problem and creating another one. Some of the funding programs that MEDC works with specifically that target cities and their downtowns are going to go away. So it's unfortunate, we're solving one problem and creating another, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware that this is what's happening in regard to the debates and discussions at the state legislature at this time. I also wanted to announce to you that the, through LEAP and the city of Lansing and all the members, including the city of Mason, that a grant for half million dollars was awarded, again, from the EPA for the brownfields program. Now, we've seen these grants come through Ingham County before, and we're eligible being a member of LEAP for these funds, $400,000 to be used to investigate economic development sites, properties, and then $100,000 specifically targeting petroleum-related activities, lusts, leaking underground storage tanks. So it's a great opportunity, I have forwarded this information out to several of the different developers that we're working with to see if that would, might help in terms of proceeding forward with some of the projects here in Mason, and wanted to get this out publicly as well. It's been a news release through LEAP, but also it benefits or can benefit the city of Mason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Any questions? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Sorry, I'm going to start a process. Barely.
I figured, but I kept thinking that.
Yeah. Debbie is trying to check on the staff.